If you are watching this video, you are tuning in now to the City of Houston Housing and Community Development, Houston Public Works, and the Office of Emergency Management's public hearing action plan, or public hearing to talk about the action plan for mitigation that we are going to be developing and submitting this spring. To give you a sense of the overview of our program today, this first, we'll be starting in about five minutes, give or take, with an introduction, and then we'll move into a presentation, which will be broadcasted in this stream. And then we'll take a break as from the actual recording, as the group, the attendees here will have discussions in their tables that we don't usually broadcast, so that people can actually be as honest as possible. And then we'll recommence the broadcast for the public comment period around 7:10, 7:15, depending on how fruitful the discussions we have are. At this time, attendees are able to go around to different program areas and learn more about these programs. So we will get started in just a few minutes. Thank you for bearing with us.
Good evening. If you are here for the public hearing, I'm inviting you to circle in. I know that we probably have a few more people straddling in because of the, there are ways out there, but we'll go ahead and get started.
Two steps is cool.
Right out of people's way now?
One more.
One more.
Perfect.
All right, right where the glare is lining you.
Yes, right there.
Let's see, maybe I can, can I step over?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, there we go. I'm Tom McCausland, I'm the Director of the Housing and Community Development Department for the City of Houston. While we are not normally involved in public infrastructure, because of the funding source for these particular funds, we are the receiving entity for the City of Houston for these federal funds, and we'll be working very closely with Public Works and our flooding czar Steve Costello in the mayor's office as we move forward. Before we get started, let me represent, or welcome a representative from the Lieutenant Thomas's office at large and before. It's good to have you here. I don't see any other elected officials. Am I missing anyone?
Councilmember Tiffany Thomas.
Councilmember?
Tiffany Thomas.
Tiffany Thomas, thank you, thank you. Good to have you here. I think that's everyone. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. As I mentioned, tonight we'll be discussing a new federal grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is called a mitigation, Community Development Block Grant mitigation dollars, primarily intended to mitigate against future impacts of storms. In February 2018, the federal government allocated $4.3 billion to the state of Texas for disaster mitigation. From HUD, that money went to the Texas General Land Office. In addition to that $4.3 million, the City of Houston was directly allocated $61 million for disaster mitigation. Tonight's hearing is specifically about that $61 million. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss this direct allocation, and we will inform our action plan, which is the funding mechanism that we will provide back to HUD as we develop the plans for these funds. With repeated flooding events occurring in 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2019, the public feedback we receive tonight with regard to the flood mitigation is going to be a priority as we program these funds. It is important for us, and it is important for the HUD process that we hear from the community, ensuring that these funds are used to its maximal purpose. We realize that $61 million is not a significant amount of money when you look at the infrastructure needs of a city the size of Houston. But we also want to make sure that as we move through this process, that we use these funds as wisely as possible, and use it to mitigate and leverage against the other funding that is available. In terms of that issue, in terms of the leveraging, we will be looking to partner both with Harris County and Harris County Flood Control District to address flooding in neighborhoods. Let me say this, when the housing dollars came in, we made a strong effort to make sure that the housing dollars were used for housing recovery, and when the mitigation dollars came in, we want to make sure that similarly, the mitigation dollars and infrastructure dollars are used appropriately for infrastructure. Again, we are the receiving entity within the Housing Department. We have, I believe, the extent of the city's experts on the HUD process, the Community Development Block Grant dollars. You'll be hearing from some of those experts tonight, but we are not the flooding experts. We'll be looking to Steve Costello, to Director Haddock, Carol Haddock, and their team members to make sure that as the infrastructure gets planned, that this money is wisely used and quickly used, rather than the money being delayed in deployment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Itz, who will take us through the rest of the process. We'll go through this initial, well, Mary, why don't I just let you detail the rest of the program?
Good evening, my name is Mary Itz. I'm the Principal Planner with the City of Houston's Housing and Community Development Department. I'll give you all a quick overview of the grant and the grant process, and then we'll have a representative from our Office of Emergency Management discuss risk assessment, the risk assessment in our action plan, and then we'll have a representative from our Houston Public Works Department to discuss with you the budget and the action plan programs. So unlike past Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds that were intended to address impacts from a particular disaster, these mitigation funds don't have to tie back to a particular disaster event. They can instead be used to reduce risk against future disasters. Well, like Tom said, we'll have to submit an action plan to HUD on March 2. So this is our process. In August, the CDVG MIT rules were published in the Federal Register Notice, and this is our second of two public, we had two public hearings, this is our second tonight. Our first was before the draft action plan was published in November. We're currently, our draft action plan is out for public review, a 45-day comment period, which ends on January 27. We will, in February, after the end of the comment period, we will incorporate public comments and finalize the plan, and ask, in February, we'll ask for City Council approval to submit our action plan to HUD before the deadline of March 2. So what are the mitigation activities? HUD worked with FEMA to develop a definition of mitigation activities. HUD defines mitigation activities as those that increase resilience, reduce risk, and limit the impact of future disasters. Eligible activities broadly include infrastructure, housing, economic development, or planning. The draft action plan includes our risk assessment, so I will introduce Melanie Bartis from our Office of Emergency Management to go through the risk assessment.
Thank you very much, Mary. And thank you all very much for coming here tonight. It's very important to us in the City of Houston to have public input into this process. It's not just required by the grant program, but our plans aren't any good if they aren't informed by you. So thank you all for being here today. Now to talk a little bit about the mitigation risk assessment, which was a required part of the plan that was produced. We are also required to tie it back to our hazard mitigation action plan, which is a plan that has actually gone through this process already. In 2017 and 2018, we went through a comprehensive plan rewrite, and so prior to Hurricane Harvey, we had done a lot of this assessment. So, sorry, thank you. So you can see on these slides, for those of you who might not be able to see them, I'll let you know, the highest hazard is flooding. Many of you are here because of flooding, I'm not telling you anything if you don't know. Hurricanes, extreme heat, thunderstorm winds, lightning, those are all in the high, or excuse me, up to lightning. Lightning is moderate, tornadoes moderate. The frequency and the potential severity both factor into whether we call it something high, moderate, or low. A dam failure, for example, is pretty unlikely, but it is substantially severe. So it categorizes as low, but that doesn't mean there's no risk, right? So all of these hazards have risk in Houston, and we have to classify them as such when we need assessments. So flood and flood risk, again, all of you are intimately familiar with flood risk and what that represents here in Houston. As you know, also flood risk is not static. Flood risk changes every day as we build a new building, pave a new parking lot, implement a mitigation strategy that actually reduces flood losses. So flood risk changes in Houston every day, something that's important to consider. Flood insurance rate maps, back there, there's some flood insurance rate maps. These are one snapshot in risk, but it's not, it's not the whole picture. It's something that FEMA uses to determine insurance rates, but it's, again, just one factor in determining what our flood risk is. And obviously, and I'll be all, during tropicals from Amelda, I believe it was upwards of 60% of the houses that flooded were outside of a map of flood zone. So bear that in mind, as many of you are painfully aware of. Also, we are looking at ways to come up with a better comprehensive flood picture in the City of Houston, taking data from federal partners, state partners, nonprofits, academic partners, holding all of that together, and get the best data we can to present a better picture of flood risk. So this is a map that shows information about repetitive flood losses. Many of you also might have flooded repeatedly, but this is a heat map showing some of those areas. This is actually pretty, pretty hardy, is that correct? Yes, this was a pretty hardy map, so showing, more recent data would show more orange areas on this map, unfortunately. So flood hazard data sources, again, some of them are in the back corner of the room, you'll see some of the flood maps if you want to go look at them more closely, but yes, you're welcome to take a picture of this, because some of these links are helpful to you. For those of you who live in here, tell me, the flood education mapping tool is where you'll find those flood insurance rate maps. Montgomery and Fort Ben also have websites where you can access those. Real time, when there's a flood, flood event happening in Houston, a good way to see what's going on is going to the 3-1-1 data, and there's T5. And then in the future, the orange box below is MapNext. This is a project that Harris County Flood Control District is undertaking in partnership with federal partners, state partners, nonprofits, academia, to come up with that better global picture of what flood risk looks like. So, I think I've said this a lot, the flood risk is changing, and it's getting worse. It's getting worse in Houston. Again, many of you are painfully aware, I don't want to preach the fire, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but new data do indicate that the 1% annual chance flood event, what we call the 100-year rainfall event, is worse than previously considered. An 100-year storm has risen from what would be about a foot to 17 inches, and then also I wrote down some more, because I thought it was pretty fascinating, using this new data, the Atlas data, a 10-year event for a 24-hour period is nine inches, for 100 yards, it's the 17, for a 500-year event, it's 30 inches. It's pretty smoky. So hurricane, again, many of you have been through this. Some of the risks that we consider beyond just the flood risk that we're intimately familiar with, wind, storms, or flooding, which many of you may not realize that Houston is vulnerable to, but some of the reaches of the bayous that extend into Galveston Bay are vulnerable to surge. Have you ever seen any of the bayous flowing backwards? Yes, yes, I've not, it's unpleasant. And so, also because of the nature of the ship channel, there are a lot of hazardous materials stored along the ship channel, and those are also vulnerable to storms or flooding. Sea level rise, very similar hazard when you think about storm surge. Over time, there's a lot of data available in trying to determine what sea level rise looks like. While it may not appear to have an immediate impact on Houston, again, some of those reaches of those streams, in the next 80 years, we expect... ...a typical drainage, neighborhood drainage improvement project can cost $20 to $50 million, depending on the size of the neighborhood. And under our normal capital improvement program, in order to kind of really take on those types of projects, we have to break them into smaller pieces of $10 to $20 million. So you can see, with the $58 million available, there are going to be some limitations on how far we can go with drainage improvements. But we will look at improving ditches. Much of the city, almost half the city, is served by drainage ditches, and in some cases we'll be able to regrade them or increase their depth to increase capacity. And these are kind of green infrastructure improvements. These are pervious surfaces, and that's the direction we'd really like to try to go, because more concrete, more storm sewer, storm sewer has limited capacity and it's covered with concrete, and that just creates runoff problems. We also look at some detention, we're doing a lot of coordination with Harris County Flood Control District right now. Many of the local improvements we do to either the ditch or the storm sewer system require that we hold back some of the water before sending it to the flood control channels. So we have to create detention laws. So these are the kinds of things we're working on. In order to do that, we are right now in the process of refining the studies we've already done, and the project proposals we've developed in the past with the new rainfall data. And what that means is, anything that we had planned before is going to have to be upsized, because it's going to have to be able to handle what we now know are much higher rainfall totals on average. So we are, that process is ongoing. And then we will also, at the same time, we're coordinating with flood control and their bond improvements, because many neighborhood drainage improvements require increased capacity in the flood control channels too, because when those come out of banks, there's nothing that our local storm sewer system can do to handle that. So where flood control's doing improvements, we can come in behind and upgrade the local system also, so that kind of win-win benefit from that type of coordination. We also have another funding opportunity, which is this same source of funding, it's CDVG mitigation dollars that have gone to the states to be distributed statewide, and that's a much larger allocation of funds, and we will apply for some of those. The state plan, just like this local plan, is also open for comment. Their comment period closes at the end of the week, and we are working with the state and submitting comments to make sure that we can maximize our opportunities to apply for those funds. There's a lot of competition statewide. So just a little bit more detail on the state program. Just over $4 billion was allocated to the state of Texas. This is really the bulk of the money that everyone heard about the past couple of years, shortly after Hurricane Harvey, that our congressional delegation worked very hard to secure in order to mitigate the impacts of Hurricane Harvey. So the state has those funds. The state's comment period closes at the end of this week, so if you're interested and you want to make sure, and help us make sure that Houston can qualify for that money, please let the state know about the level of need in this region. They've created several categories of funds, so we're going to have to kind of, again, look at our different funding opportunities and determine what projects move forward based on the funding attribute. So we have to wait and see how they finalize their criteria. We're going to break up into discussion groups right now. We have a couple of questions that we'd like to get input from everyone on, and then after we do that for about 20 minutes, we'll open the floor for general public comment that will be recorded. Stick with these tables or break up?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe consolidate some of these tables, and we'll get started.
Okay. If you are watching the Facebook livestream, we know we cut out for a couple of slides there. We will go back and stitch together all of the pieces of this broadcast and put the slides that were missed in the middle there. We also took some additional footage, so hopefully we'll be able to get everything you guys missed into a cohesive picture. Apologies for the signal flashiness there. To give you a sense of what's going to happen next, in order to let residents get a more natural discussion, we cut the livestream for the breakout groups, but then we will record the public comment period, which is scheduled to begin around 7:15. Subject to change depending on how conversation is going, but we try not to cut off any really good discussions happening. So we will cut off the livestream and see you all shortly. So, we will cut off the livestream and see you all shortly.
So, my name is Bear Summers. I am Assistant Director in Housing Development Department, overseeing the Planning and Grants Management Team. Just as Tom said earlier, we thank you for coming out tonight and especially for taking part in the, the discussions that we just had. That's really good feedback that we'll be utilizing as we finish off the action plan process. Before we get started, we want to recognize Councilmember Tiffany Thomas for coming in the door, right here from Thank you for being here, we appreciate you. So when you came in, you received a copy of the agenda, it was on sign-in table there. And on the back of the agenda was the public hearing rules, kind of how this is going to work. It looks like this right here. You also indicated whether you wanted to speak or not. So what we'll do is we'll work down the list of people that said yes, and we've kind of warmed up a little bit during the discussion and have some say, we'll call you up to have a, to talk about it afterwards. We're going to give you three minutes to provide your public comment. This isn't a question and answer session, but with that being said, if you have something that can be answered here, we have a lot of experts in the room, we'll point you to that direction, see if we can get you some response or get you So the three minutes we have Jessica over here that will kind of queue you for one minute remaining, thirty seconds remaining, and kind of when that's out of time. Your comments will be incorporated into our action plan as well as responses from the city. And so the final document that's submitted to HUD, we will have all your comments from tonight, the comments that we had from the first public hearing we held will also be in the document. So I'm going to call you one at a time. We have Chris here that has another microphone and will ask, she'll bring it to you and have you do your, your comments. And like I said, we'll work through a list that we compiled of people that were interested in doing so. And then when they're, we'll call up anybody else that may want to find an initial comment on the record. First up, we have Nancy Tool.
No one else signed up? I think it was And this will take me three minutes. It's not
No, you're here.
The only thing that I have to contribute is, I think, whatever the plan is, it should be spent on the maximum number of people, not the maximum number of property dollars lost. It shouldn't be based just on who has FEMA insurance and made a claim. It should be the maximum number of people that are going to be helped by whatever mitigation we can do. I, I guess I misunderstood. I thought that housing was a part of this, but it is, since it is dealing with infrastructure, we just need to find every way we can get the water to our ditches as fast as possible with most people help. So it's all I can say.
Thank you. All right, next up, Julia Ordania.
My name is Paulie Argulia. I am a community navigator and disaster recovery for Texas Housers. In the last six months, I have engaged with the government and residents alike to monitor the progress of the city of Houston in the disaster recovery efforts. Me preocupa la equidad en estos procedimientos que resuenan como un recuerdoatorio de la segregación histórica, la privación de los derechos de la comunidad de bajos ingresos y las personas de color en la ciudad de Houston. Y como eso puede reflejarse en la ejecución en este plan de acción. For those who didn't understand me, I'm concerned with the equity of the continued proceedings that resonate as a reminder of the historical segregation and disenfranchisement of low-income community and people of color in the city of Houston, and how this may reflect in the execution of this action plan. There were issues with the dissemination of correct information of this public hearing, which may have compromised the community's ability to attend. Aside from the standard English, I am unaware of any other language in which this public hearing was advertised. I personally only received a couple of emails in English. The city of Houston has shown a record of poor communication with residents and program applicants. I hope this will change now and in the future. This public hearing is also being held in an area identified in the bottom quarter of the social vulnerability index in the current draft of this action plan. Low-income residents in northeast area of the city whom still are living in unsafe houses from Harvey and Amelda have been repeatedly flooded due to lack of Repeated flooding due to lack of proper infrastructure. This meeting was very important to them and equally as inaccessible. As you all outlined in your flyer, it takes almost two hours to ride public transportation to this site. I implore that the city hold another public hearing in an area identified as a high social vulnerability and areas with major flooding and substantial drainage. I also ask that you please provide links to all outside documents referenced, including but not limited to the most comprehensive hazard indications and risk assessment for mitigation planning that was completed in two thousand seventeen, Resilient Houston, Plan Houston, and others. Please provide links to the documents submitted to HUD delineated in D2 general requirements, including but not limited to staff planning procedures ensuring internal integral coordination, procedures for providing technical assistance, and accountability procedures. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Gladys Hassel.
She might have left, actually. She handed me her survey.
John Hindenberger.
My name is John Hindenberger, I'm with Texas Housers. I have the following comments. Number one, the storm drainage level of services that is explained, how the determination is going to be on the storm level drainage of services appearing on pages forty-nine and fifty of the proposed plan are incomprehensible to me, and I have a rudimentary engineering background. I, I don't know how citizens are supposed to be able to decipher where the city is actually considering placing drainage infrastructure based on this, very difficult to understand. Secondly, sixty-one percent of the FEMA applicants with unmet need, according to the FEMA data, were low and moderate income persons. The city has elected to commit only fifty percent of the benefit to low and moderate income. That does not represent the position of a progressive city or one that cares about economic and racial equity. Number three, I'm concerned about Chapter Nineteen and the implementation of Chapter Nineteen and the failure to prioritize low-income neighborhoods of color, which are, have been disproportionately impacted by Hurricane Harvey, to receive assistance for drainage relief and elevation assistance. I, we've done a study on that, and I will provide you a copy of the study, but we believe this is going to have devastating impacts unless this money is specifically targeted to the areas of the Fifth Ward and Cashmere Gardens and other low-income neighborhoods because people will not have the money to elevate their homes. Number four, it is essential that this department, that the Public Works Department, and I don't believe that the Flood Czar is here, which I find disturbing because he is the Flood Czar, and this is one of two here. Excuse me? He's not present. Let the record show that he's not present. That the, it is important that the, the Public Works Department tell the community which projects are under consideration, not simply take information about what are priorities and things, but tell the people what you're considering funding, what the data says, and allow them to make a comment on that before you make the commitment. Not ask for input before you tell people what you're thinking about doing. It's backwards. There's no Section Three plan called for in here. And the communities that we work in believe very strongly that jobs are critical, and this, these infrastructure projects should require that contractors hire from the local community to give people jobs if they're, if they're receiving this money. It is also a federal requirement, and it's not present in this draft plan. There needs, the, to be established, number six, there needs to be established a real-time reporting system for progress. The notion of this taking twelve years is of course appalling and should not be allowed to, to, to be accepted as, as the expectation. The Public Works Department in the city need to provide monthly real-time reports on the status of each project that it's undertaking so citizens can know where they stand in the queue and can put pressure on their elected officials to respond to things. Number seven, and I have eight total here. Number seven is, there must be, well, I think I just did that, that's transparency. And then finally, I want to make a plea that if this city is sincerely committed to complete communities, which the mayor claims to be, but has yet to put any real money behind complete communities, but if it is ever to happen, this money must be part of the commitment of the city to complete communities. For if you don't provide flood protection, if you don't provide, if you don't keep people's homes from flooding, you will never revitalize a community. And so I would call upon the city to include specific neighborhoods in this plan and to identify specific communities among the complete communities as priority recipients for the funds. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Jolie Canales. Maria Luis Paz.
Hi, my name is Maria Paz, and Marisa Paz. We are recruiting assistants with the twenty-twenty census. The reason we're here is just to give you an update of the phase we are right now. We've been recruiting census takers in thousands of positions for the twenty-twenty census all this year, past year, the nineteen. And now, the census is making offer jobs of January and February. In March, they're going to begin the training for all the census takers. In April first, Census Day, we're going to begin going out and help the people to complete the survey. So, we have a letter I'm going to pass to everybody about the way you and your organization can help us to spread the word about the jobs. We need thousands of people, and you know, in Harris County, it's one of the best paid in the whole nation. They're paying twenty-four fifty an hour plus fifty-eight cents a mile that people drive. So please, if you know somebody that is looking for a job, flexible hours, the people can go anytime they want to do it, during that day or daylight, including Saturday and Sunday. So just, please, you and your organization can help us to, to spread the word about that, all the jobs. We need, still, we need a lot of people. And the job is going to be from April to July, around five months, where the people can make around a thousand dollars a week. Okay.
Four days of the training?
Excuse me?
Four days of the training?
Um, that training, okay, training is going to be in March, March and April, but that training for the census takers is going to be two days. Two days in a classroom, one day, one week, one day, another week, and then two days online. It's going to be four days. All the training is paid at a lower rate, about twenty-two dollars. And we, we still have a lot of position in the office and on the field. For the field, it's flexible hours. On the office, everybody's going to have a schedule. So, please, spread the word about this job, so we have thousands, thousands of workers around Houston. Thank you very much.
Okay, we had two people indicating maybes, so we'll just see where he's standing at this point in time. Andy Perez.
My name is Andy Perez, and I'm just representing myself, I'm also a student. But I have an interest in environmental management, so my question, or rather, my comment is to see if maybe we're going to be pushing for zoning laws or whether we should be pushing for zoning laws. And also, when we're at the table, I was talking about maybe using our ecological habitat, our environment, to maybe mitigate some of the effects, maybe stop building on wetlands, stop destroying wetlands. And I agree with some of the people here, some of the community organizers, that I do believe that this event wasn't spread, that information wasn't spread enough. I also don't see, like, I haven't seen any intemperors for people who don't, can't verbally communicate. So that's definitely an issue, I think. We also don't have any Spanish translators or any translators in any languages. I grew up in Aleve, and when I was in school, I remember getting flyers in like four different languages. So I think that's definitely something that should be implemented, especially for community meetings like this. And I agree that it wasn't spread enough. So, something that happens in my neighborhood schools, I bring these links, is that the school will give them like interesting things like faucets, shower faucets that save water, or like sink faucets that save water, and they'll just give it to kids, and then the kids just give it to the parents. So maybe like getting schools involved and spreading information about events like this because parents are pretty busy, but we have to pay attention to the children. So maybe spreading that information, using our school system to spread that information about meetings like this would be helpful.
And then, last up on the maybe list was Eileen Egan. Good? Okay. Is there anyone else that feels compelled that they want to come up or say something on the record tonight? This is your opportunity. And please state your name before.
Okay, I'm Zellmo Fields, and I'm the president of Willow Run North Plaza Community Association. And the main reason I'm standing is because I want to make sure that we, our community is included in this storm drain system. Because we do flood, and we flood bad. So I just want us to be included in this sixty-one million, or whatever many dollars we got, to help us update our storm drainage. City accessed us like in nineteen eighty-five, we were the county, and they did give us new water lines, they gave us new sewer lines, but they have not updated our storm drain, and we flood even when everybody's in Houston is not flooding. Because it just does not accept the water. So we do need you all there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so before we wrap up, speaking of notifications, we have a board on the way out on this table on the outside, and let us know how you like to be contacted, or if you have recommendations on how we can contact other people. There's posts up there, there's pens up there, if you're looking for those types of suggestions. So feel free to just take a moment to do that. Once again, I want to thank each of you for coming out tonight, especially on Tuesday night. Traffic's terrible, but you made it to the figure, and we appreciate it. I appreciate all the staff that helped do all this. Yes, sir.
I have a comment. There are a lot of very well-organized HOAs in the Houston area who maintain Facebook groups and all kinds of fantastic communication.
Yes.
I would think that the city could connect with their connection and spread in literal seconds.
We're, we're looking into having a flight next door and other apps that do similar things.
Superneighborhood, that's, that's part of what he's talking about, superneighborhoods that kind of thing. He's already got that.
Right, and we have a listing for that, and if there's additional, we can be contacted for those recommendations. Absolutely. Also, we have, we have staff around the edge of the room, talk about our programs, about things the city offers. Please take the time to, to go by the tables and get to know them and ask some questions. And we'll be sitting around here for a little while longer as well. So if you need anything, please let us know. Thank you for coming out, have a safe drive home, have a good evening.